Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to bring this public 1028 hearing to order. I really am amazed and appreciate this great big turnout, whether you're in support or opposition of it. You all realize this is a hearing, right? Lady Gaga and Bradley Cooper are not singing here tonight. There'll be no shout out. No, 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 no. But we'll start all of your roles. Yeah, yeah, all your roles. Exactly. All right, we'll take it up with that. It's a 1028 hearing. This evening's public hearing is called a 1028 hearing. The hearing this type is a legal requirement prior to the Public School Corporation moving forward to approve the issuance of bonds. This process relates to the potential financing of the proposed construction and equipping of one new elementary school to be located at 748 Spice Wood Drive, Clarksville, Indiana, 47129, the site of the current Parkwood Elementary School. And a new pool as well located at Jeffersonville High School, 2315 Allison Lane, Jeffersonville, Indiana, 47139 respectively. And general improvements at all academic buildings of the school corporation. The project and the financing of the project.
And Mr. Lawler.
Yeah, just wanted to intervene there real quick, just to give the board a background on how we arrived here tonight. As you know, three and a half years ago, we went to work on a facility plan where we put a task force together to review our facility study that was done by Lancer Plus DVD. That task force met several times. What came of that is it was a priority list of items that we needed to address throughout the school district in terms of our facilities. We then broke that down into a five-year facility plan. What we're bringing to the board tonight with this hearing is year three of that facility plan. You know, so I'd like to say to the board and also everyone in attendance, we're sticking to the plan. You know, we said we were going to create a good plan and we were going to stick with it and work through it. This is year three of that plan. The other things we've also said and have committed to is that we would not negatively impact the taxpayer. We will be able to do these projects that are part of this hearing without raising the tax rate. They will be tax-neutral projects. The two big ones involved in this hearing tonight is obviously the replacement of Parkwood Elementary in Clarksville. That building's right at 54 years old. There's about 700 new apartments being built in that part of our school district. That building's at capacity right now. It doesn't have the greatest floor plan to build on to. Renovations would be above the 70% replacement cost, or 70% of the replacement cost, so we feel like a new building there is the right path to go down. The pool at Jeffersonville High School, also right at 50 years old, has not been renovated or touched, except for a little paint, minor cosmetic things. It's time to do something with that pool. Once again, when we explored the cost of trying to renovate that pool into an eight- or 10-lane pool with a diving well and more seating capacity, the cost of that was going to be well above 70% of what it's going to cost to build a new pool. So once again, we feel like the right thing to do is to build a new pool as a school district. So there's some other little things also involved in this hearing, but the two major ones are Parkwood Elementary and the pool. So I also appreciate the attendance tonight from the community, the students, parents, community members, and hope that you'll support these projects. And I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Buck Lawler and let us get on with the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Lawler. The school board encourages comments and questions related to these projects by citizens of Greater Park County. If you desire to comment, when I open the public hearing for comments, you should raise your hand, and when I recognize you, come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes for your presentation. Doesn't seem like a long time until you have to talk for three minutes. They say that you'll get a notice about a minute out to conclude your comments. For the sake of time, if the prior speaker has the same thing to say basically that you do, unless you have a really serious exclamation point to put on it, you know, you may think it, or you can come up with them in support of that comment. At this time, I'm opening the public hearing portion of this meeting and ask for those interested in making comments to raise their hands. You, sir. And the young lady, if you can go back.
Thank you, Mr. President of the Board. My name is Mike Mustang. I live at 708 Flatwoods Drive, Clarksville, Indiana. I'm also on the Clarksville Town Council. You all well know the condition of Parkwood. People will know the overcrowding that exists there and the conditions that exist there, so I won't take time to go into that. You also all well know the demographics of the students who are served at Parkwood. Parkwood is unique in that it is our neighborhood school. We do have a development of some $52 million, a $52 million dollar development being built right next door as a neighborhood. Another just broke ground, another $48 million dollar apartment complex has just broke ground for a total of just approximately right at 550, I'm sorry, 550 new dwellings that will feed into Parkwood. The need is real. The teachers, the staff need better facilities. The students will perform better, as you well know. Parking and traffic will likewise improve. I support the plan and will do whatever I can to see the new Parkwood school built for our students and our staff.
Thank you. You'd like to go, ma'am? I'll get to you, I promise you.
P. D. Gordon. My name is Sandy Mustang, and I also live at 708 Flatwoods Drive in Clarksville. I stand tonight in favor of the Parkwood Elementary School rebuild. After 50-plus years of multiple additions and many extensive repairs, it's time. We have nice new apartment complexes currently being built that will bring more students to our Parkwood school. Parkwood students deserve a new state-of-the-art school which will facilitate a better learning environment. Also, although it's finish week for me, as I and our daughters all attended Parkwood, I know there comes a time when we must understand that repair costs and renovations come very costly, and we still have a very old outdated school. Let's work together to make this happen for our Parkwood students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Elizabeth Beck. I live at 1043 E. B. W., in Sellersburg, Indiana. I am the speech-language pathologist at Parkwood Elementary. I've been an SLP for 32 years and have had the opportunity to work in at least four different schools in my entire career. Currently at Parkwood, there are two speech pathologists. Between the two of us, we serve 112 students. With all the new apartment buildings that you're well aware of, that number will grow. Now, we share an office because there's no other place for the other speech pathologists to go to. Our office is also our speech resource room. At times, students need a quiet environment to discriminate and learn new speech sounds. Now, it can't be none, or I should say it's very challenging when we're doing speech in the hallway or in the back of the classroom. Now, Parkwood serves several special populations, which most of you know, including a moderate-severe classroom with at least 21 students, all of whom the Parkwood SLPs support, a developmental preschool, and a preschool for typically developing students, which also contains speech students. And there's also an emotional handicap classroom. I'm mentioning this because many non-therapy people, teachers, administrators, board members, architects, parents, have no idea what a typical day is for a school-based speech pathologist, occupational therapist, or physical therapist. People hear the word "school" and immediately only think about teachers and students, but we are there too, and we are often the forgotten personnel. So I thought you might like to hear what a typical day is like for me and my fellow therapists. We start therapy providing services for our fresh new three-year-olds who have transitioned from the first steps program, the Birth of Three program, which now we are legally bound to serve because they are free. So I see them before the bell rings. Then I rush back to my office, gather materials, and go out into the genet population to serve students quickly who are working on minor speech sounds so they don't spend as much academic time. Then I might run back to my office, gather materials, and either go to the moderate-severe classroom or the preschool classroom, come back, pull students, when I can, into the classroom, but I have to share that space with the other speech therapists. So if it's not available, then I spend a lot of time walking around the building trying to find a space. So that becomes wasted therapy time for our students. I will have to do several evaluations in a week. Now, at Parkwood, as you all know, we have a high population of English-language learners. So then I also have to get an interpreter, because as a speech pathologist, I have to evaluate them in English and whatever their primary language is at Parkwood is usually Spanish. I have to find an interpreter, but he's been spread out to the four corners of the district now, so that also is a challenge. We don't have enough people to help me. I am not bilingual, despite trying to be. So I provide services in lots of different places. Now, every week I also share space with the OTs and the PTs. And we have a minds-and-motion room, which allows us to provide gross motor therapy activities, but we share that with the health clinic, with the health department. So that lady's in there seeing our six students. There's a divider there, but the six students are sharing space with noisy ball kids doing gross motor activities, and conversely, our healthy students are sharing the classroom with our six students. So now, in the beginning, I mentioned all the different classrooms and populations that we serve. My speech resource room is about as far away from where I provide the bulk of my treatment as it possibly can be physically located in the school. It's as far away as it can be from the moderate-severe classroom and as far away as it can be from the preschool population.
Ms. Beck.
Yeah.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes.
First off, all those things you do, when do you find time to use the restroom? I need to know that.
Well, in a parkwood dorm room.
Yeah. But I hate to interrupt you, but we're at your three-minute time.
Okay.
You've done great, and thank you very much.
Yes, yes. Anyway, in closing, I'm just slightly older than the Parkwood building, and trust me when I say once things get that old. So ideally, Parkwood will have a new building that will adequately serve its growing community, and the board at Greater Clark will consider the therapists when they're designing that building.
You should have jumped for that closer. That was awesome. Thank you, Ms. Beck. Very much. Yeah, sure, Mr. Festin Ty. Come on up here.
While he's coming up, I wanted to interject one more thing about the pool that I failed to mention earlier. One of the things that building a new pool will allow us to do at Jeff High is when the question becomes, what are we going to do with the old pool? You know, and our plan in the facility plan that we have would be that in year four, after the pool's done, we would renovate the old pool into a wrestling arena room, but also expand the weight room space that's underneath, you know, Jeff High there that's woefully small for a school the size of Jeff High. So just wanted to add that, that there's other impacts at Jeff High of building a new pool, which would be creating a space for the wrestling team, but also creating more weight room space for all the athletes in the school of Jeff High. Sorry I interrupted. I'm sorry.
It's going to be hard to follow up with this after that, but I'm Brandon Weinbrunner, 7724 Joseph Drive, Sellersburg, Indiana, and I'm in my seventh year as the principal at Parkwood Elementary School. I'm here to attest that the teaching and learning inside the aging walls of Parkwood far exceeds the outward appearance of the building and is counter to what I learned as ultimate indication. The work of our teachers and staff is admirable in spite of many hurdles they face, including and especially the facility itself. The facility is often a barrier to academic outcomes and is often a distraction from the work that really matters. The classrooms are not open and inviting, the carpet in the rooms is old and dirty, there's very little storage and no casework, the walls and ceilings look extremely weathered. Further, while progress was made with some recent HVAC updates, an air quality study survey a few years ago indicated high levels of CO2 in most of the sampled classrooms. While the levels did not reach the level of being harmful, many rooms did exceed levels where drowsiness can occur. This most certainly would impact academic performance. We've often had water bugs, bats, mice, snakes, and skinks inside the building due to the many places where the building is not weather tight. Multiple times per year, bats and snakes are removed. One positive to this is that we often get the rare opportunity to see an endangered species of snake, although I think our staff would agree to prefer to see them outside of the building. The cafeteria and kitchen are undersized, which creates a tight schedule for the lunch rotation and makes it extremely difficult for the kitchen crew to keep up. The single line and single point of pay makes serving very inefficient. Further, the capacity of the cafeteria is 240, which means that we can fit no more than two grade levels at a time, and the tables take up so much space, there's very little room to move. The gym is also undersized, wherein the basketball court takes up the entire space and does not approach the size of a regulation court. The top of the key is only a few feet from half court, and the width of the court is very narrow. Further, the stage is on the end of the gym, and whenever we have a performance, it's perpendicular to the bleachers, so folding chairs have to be set up. When the bleachers are employed, they're undersized, leaving many people to stand there in gains that approach the court. This is not comfortable or safe. We also have an issue with storage. The stage will often use repeat equipment and extra furniture, which means we can't use the performances and other ones. Parkwood is located in a growing area and will soon see an influx of students from new developments in our zone. We're already using every available classroom space, so the new enrollments will maybe scrambling to house all of them within the next three years. Additionally, we serve a high-poverty, highly transient population, and a new attractive school may help stabilize the community. I will reiterate that our students and staff face many barriers to success, and this project will help alleviate some of them. Our students deserve a facility that is conducive to learning, and our staff deserves the tools that the new building will provide in order for them to maximize their service towards those students. Please consider this commitment to the community and show the northern half of Clarksville that Greater Park is invested in providing the best learning opportunities as possible in an attractive building that will serve generations to come.
Thank you. Sure. We have some student ambassadors here too. Oh, no, certainly, raise their hand. Sure, that'd be fine. I've called on that kind of... Okay. Were you raising your hand for...
Do you want to go? No. Okay. Just checking. Okay, I'm switching it up on purpose. My name's Amy Dixon. I live at 3014 Powell's Drive in Jeffersonville. I'm a local realtor, and more importantly, I am a proud mom to three amazing young women who were raised partly in the Jeff High swimming pool and by the swim family. I'm here on behalf of Adeline, Hallie, and Bonnie today. They each swam for pace and eventually for J. H. Swim... J. H. ... Jeff Swimming. They made their mark not only on the pool record board, but also in the classroom here and in their respective colleges. Both Bonnie and Hallie have gone on to swim in college. Hallie is an NCAA All-American with a D2 top-eight swim nationally, and Bea just got this really cool national NAI collegiate championship ring as she finished sixth nationally. The best thing about this story, besides the size of it, is on the back it says "Family", and that's what a swim team is. Dennis and I are beyond proud of the girls, but we can't take all the credit for the women they have become. Like I said, they were raised in the pool, by the coaches, by other swimmers, and by other swim parents. As a proud mom, I can promise you that this community has been through its ups and downs, and we have always rallied around the kids that call that 50-year-old pool home. We have done whatever it takes to donate, to fundraise, to duct tape, and to pray that the pool remains a functioning place for our girls and the team to practice. We were talking about this and just thinking about this thing. Basketball players, football players, golfers, tennis players, all can go out and fundamentally practice their skills with the ball. Swimmers need a place to swim. They... Yes, we all need a weight room, which we're excited that's going to come to, and other equipment, but fundamentally, we need a pool. And it's time we're afforded the same opportunities that Evansville and Indy and Elkhart have. A pool that this community can utilize and be proud of, we need a facility kids can train in so that they too can grow up, learn the life lessons that you learn in the pool and on a team, to be competent, strong, and productive community members. There's a real tour. Park County has the largest commercial opportunities east of Mississippi, over a river ridge, and the people who are coming here to work want a place to raise their children and opportunities for them to grow and learn and play sports and swim. Right now, a six-lane pool inside this school, we cannot provide these lessons, we can't provide the space for people to do that. And the people that are moving here, I promise, want to move to a community that is better than they're than they were at. And with the facilities like a new pool and a new restroom right now and a new weight room, that would be better than our cap. The last thing I could tell you is that our last world championship sectional team in 2017, there's 12 scorers on a team. I named 13 in my head. 10 of those girls were transplants to Jeff because of the team. So they came from other appropriate schools or communities around here to go to Jeff because of the pool. Imagine what the draw would be if we had a good, really nice pool. We could even have more kids than that. I know my time's up and we need an updated pool. I love my family. If you are in favor of a pool, raise your hand, please. Thank you very much.
There you go. Nice, thank you. Thank you. I promised the young lady back here, and I'll get to you, sir. Would you like to...
Yes. Hi. I'm Erin Ellen at 401 Creek Road, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with folks tonight. And hearing a lot about what other folks are saying, physical space, not having adequate facilities, things are old, things need repair, I agree with all those things. Our wrestling arena is the same. But when I put together some notes for myself to talk with you guys tonight, I wasn't thinking about the physical space. I was thinking about what the wrestling team, the wrestling staff, the wrestling experience has done for me and my family, and how I hold that team, and I want it to grow, and how, just as others are saying, improved facilities will help grow that. The most important thing is the impact it has on the kids. My first experience with Jeff High Wrestling, my son started wrestling when he was in eighth grade. He got connected with the Jeff High team, and just before school started, they were having some preschool... I'm getting really nervous, and I don't like that, I don't know why, but... Some preseason warm-ups, I guess, and it was before school started, and all of a sudden I couldn't find my kid. We had just went through a divorce. I was upside down. He was a freshman. We were at a new home. Didn't know where my kid was, didn't know what to do. I had Danny Struck's phone number. I texted him, like, "I was going berserk." He was like, "Let me go and find out." Within five minutes, he had found my kid because he had a network of people that he could reach out to. You know, like, "Hey, we saw him walking out to the street. Let's see what's going on." That was my first experience. Over the last several years, I've just had a lot of support from our wrestling family, and I would say "family." We've got multiple coaches here tonight. We've got other moms here tonight that are just priceless to me. Experiences that I cannot even put into words, what it's done for this kid, what it's done for my other kid that I hope to get back into wrestling, and just for me as a parent trying to find my way. I have a lot spoken tonight. All right.
You can close, please.
All right. Let me go to the last one then. We know the statistics show that when kids are involved in things, when they have loving adults that help direct them and help guide them, they're successful. Again, I know that our facility is not the best facility. We make do with that facility. We're one of those byproducts. We're one of those second things that are in this plan that we want to be a part of. I want other families to benefit, like I've benefited, like he's benefited, like I know some of the other kids standing in the back of the room have benefited, other kids that have been in the program for the last several years have benefited. And that's it, and I'm proud to be a Jeff mom.
Thank you. Good luck. Yes, sir.
My name is Stetson Harper. I live at 919 Assembly Row in Jeffersonville, Indiana. Good evening, school board members and members of the community. I am here this evening with my daughter and my wife, Miranda Harper, who is also a teacher at Parkwood Elementary. She teaches fifth grade. I teach fourth grade, and we are here to stand in support of the proposed new building at Parkwood. Parkwood Elementary has become a haven for students of all backgrounds. One of our crowning accomplishments is our commitment to ensure that students of all backgrounds, whether socio-economic, ethnic, race, religion, or other backgrounds, are accepted and met exactly where they are at. We strive to create an environment that celebrates diversity and places a high priority on inclusivity. The student culture of Parkwood is one that accepts people from all walks of life. In our academics, we've been making strides in the teacher clarity process to ensure that our instruction is second to none. The teachers at Parkwood work tirelessly to create meaningful, deep, and relevant lessons for our students so that they can achieve high level of academics, which will prepare them for the future. The vision of Parkwood Elementary states that we are committed to high-quality core instruction, that we will have systematic and data-driven intervention, that enrichment and accelerated opportunities will be offered in a technology-rich environment, that students will be supported in developing persistence, respectfulness, initiative, dependability, and efficiency, and that we develop functional and productive members of our community. I am proud to say that as a faculty member, we are meeting these criteria on a daily, weekly, quarterly, and yearly basis. A new building will equip the teachers of Parkwood Elementary to continue to deliver world-class instruction through the use of a state-of-the-art facility. Research has shown that some of the most important factors to student success relate directly to the environment where students learn. Having a school building that students can be proud of will increase student morale, motivation, and ultimately academic performance. It is also worth noting that the teachers of Parkwood deserve a facility that is easy to maintain and use on a consistent basis. It has already been mentioned that just next to Parkwood are being built beautiful new apartment buildings that will undoubtedly increase our student population. We currently use every single square inch of our building and have little to no room for growth. Simply put, Parkwood needs a new building with more room. Finally, this evening, it is my personal belief that schools stand as beacons of hope for communities. We are the training ground for the next generation. We are where dreams of greatness are born. The first thoughts of scientific innovation are often born within the walls of an elementary classroom. Dreams of becoming a firefighter, a doctor, a teacher, an ironworker, or a skilled tradesman all begin within the elementary classroom. To be sure, an elementary classroom is a place of wonder, excitement, and inspiration for the future. Such a place should be treated with the utmost level of respect and reverence. This is why Parkwood deserves a new building, because the students deserve a new building.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Tori Everett. I live at 11713 Perry Crossing Parkway in Solomon Bridge, Indiana. I'm here to talk about Parkwood as well as Jeff Wrestling. So I was wrestling manager in high school, and my husband Jacob was on wrestling team as well. And so wrestling holds a special place in our hearts. And Struck, correct me if I'm wrong, but Struck always says the quote, "If you don't take time to show students the right way, then someone with more time will show them the wrong way." Is that correct? Okay. And so at Parkwood, a lot of our kids do not come from the... Um, and so at Parkwood, a lot of our kids do not come from the best backgrounds. They don't have very good, um, home environments and their safe haven is Parkwood. And so we try to put on several, um, after-school clubs, sports, and we have robotics club, basketball, basketball, wrestling. We have homework club. We have so many things that at Parkwood that we try to get the students to come to to feel safe and loved and cared for. However, when we have all these programs going on, there is not enough room. And so we can't have them all the time. We can't have them as much or as often as we would like to. Um, so that is another reason why we, we need a new, bigger and better school. Uh, moving on to Jeff Wrestling, Coach Struck puts on the elementary, um, league and, um, whatever all the elementary, elementary schools come to Parkwood or come to Jeff High, that wrestling room, there, there's no room. Like, it's, it's wild in there. Um, but they would, um, help immensely if the, the Jeff Sporting and Diving Team could get a new building and Jeff Wrestling could move into the, sort of, next one.
Yes, ma'am? You and me, ma'am?
Samantha Pierce, 8002 Old State Road 60 in Sellersburg. Um, I'm also the president of the Greater Clark Education Association. Good evening, superintendent, all members of the board. I speak this evening in support of the bond proposals on tonight's agenda. Some of the reasons I stand in support of those bonds are as follows. First, the pool at Jeffersonville High School would create an enhanced location for swim team competitions in our area. And when the broader public sees what our schools have available to support student interests in areas like wrestling and swimming, it may be a draw for additional families to come to Greater Clark. Second, the building of a new school to replace Parkwood will be a good expenditure for us. A new building will have the best of the best for our kids. It will support the most current technology, have the highest safety standards, and cutting-edge HVAC, which will create the most healthy air circulation possible for students and staff. These projects, as well as the rest of the bonds, will make our schools great places for the students we serve and may be reason for even more students to come to Greater Clark.
Thank you very much. All right. Get you, sir. You can pull that mic down. There you go. Love the hat.
Hello, my name is Zayn and I am a student ambassador at Parkwood Elementary School. And here are a couple of reasons we deserve a new school. And here is my first idea, is we should get a bigger, better classrooms, gyms, playgrounds, cafeteria, and library. And we should also get more teachers and students.
Dear, could you speak just a little louder and maybe pull that mic towards you because we're dying to hear what you have to say? Thank you.
I'm Scarlett Walker. I live in 15111, Mississippi, Long Island. I'm a fourth grader at Parkwood. I have been a student at 1000 kindergarten. I am here to speak about a new building. Um, the Parkwood community would benefit from a new building. Thank you. Parkwood was built in 1968, which was 54 years ago. Our school has lived a very long life. Many students learned to read and write and math. Our building was built before cell phones and computers and mobile devices. The school has created its own, but it has made so much progress that the, the building may be up changed to be rebuilt. Students and teachers have noticed a lot of things have broken in our system. Teachers and parents want to create a school for their students to learn. Also, Parkwood staff, I bet you would like a bigger and better classroom. We all love Parkwood, but it just means some work done on it. Like, like for example, bathrooms are dirty, not because they are not being cleaned enough, it's because it is really old and it is really unhealthy. Kids love Parkwood lots and they would love to have a new and better school. I'm not just saying that Parkwood is a bad school. It is just old. Thank you for listening to me and always your name is Parkwood and Austin.
I believe Parkwood should get a new school. If Parkwood got a new school, then we would be able to have things we didn't have at the old age. For example, we would be able to have a lot more students because it would have a lot more room. If Parkwood got a new school, students would be able to focus back. We would be able to have a lot more comfy spots around the room so we wouldn't be arguing over a spot at all. We could get more mid-work modern things. If we got a new school building, we would be able to work harder and smarter. A lot of teachers have the old building and want more updated things. If we get a new school, then the teachers could have a lot more things like smock boards and bigger areas. So yes, I believe Parkwood should get a new school.
Thank you all three very much. It took a lot of courage and it just doesn't go through all under myself because of you. I mean, that's unbelievably tough. Um, I believe I had a gentleman back here. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing us this opportunity here tonight. I was super excited. Uh, my name is Bill Burns. I live 2014 San Andrews Road in Jeffersonville. Uh, I come here as a parent that has had children in the program at Jeff High and through the PACE program and speak to, it's, it's an outstanding and amazing program. It also comes a little different perspective. Amy touched on it a little bit. But you realize that our community is being interviewed every day. Every day, there's a new business looking to relocate in our community. They're looking at the quality of life that our kids. They're looking at our facilities. They're looking at our schools. They're looking at the infrastructure. And this is just another clipper in our arrows that allows us to say, we have facilities, people are tracking those businesses. And not only are those businesses tracking, we're retaining people because we have facilities that will retain people that want to live and work and play here. We are consistently, from what I understand, losing students in neighboring, uh, community schools because our facilities are lacking. So this nadatorium and improving the school that, our view, will greatly enhance our offerings within the community. And if we don't do this, we're still going to lag behind and we're going to lose. So I'm very, we vote yes for the nadatorium campus school.
We had, I saw another hand over here.
Hello, my name is Susan Popeye. I reside at 10 Virginia Drive in Jeffersonville, Indiana. And I thank the board for, hopefully Mr. Soper probably commenting because, um, we would appreciate the opportunity. So I wanted to say I have two daughters and they were both swimmers. I was competitive swimmer and I'm here in support of Jeffersonville School. And I will say that my youngest daughter went to Providence High School and her best times were in eighth grade. So that kind of tells you the direction of her, so the career went. And my youngest daughter went to Jeffersonville High School and had an amazing opportunity, had an amazing experience. And she was also able to get a full ride to a school in Southern California. So it was just wonderful. We were so proud of her. She's a hard business, we have family that's back here. So, and not only did she develop those skills, but she also developed leadership skills and some other skills that I think you get through sports. So it's all, um, the education along with, you know, the, um, competitive track, I think is, creates a wonderful opportunity. And I just want to say a little bit about the economy of it. You know, as a competitive swimmer, I've infused a lot of passion to a lot of communities in Indiana. I think we can all attest to that. You go there and you feed, you have, you know, you spend the night and there's a lot of, um, money that I give the local community, community that I would like to see that might come back, you know, to Clark County. Because we could be hosting some of these events. It would really be an opportunity showcase of what we have here. And then, uh, just last week, I was, many years ago, I was the athletic director in Clarksville. And until we kind of talked to the YMCA before they built their pool, we were saying, you know, we really need to build a pool. This would be great for the, the vision of the community. And if anyone, I love the YMCA, this is not a, uh, a footy of it. I mean, they've got like, you know, you can't hide over there and have a swim team or anything because it'd be very, if they decided to cut corners on the, uh, swimming facility. And I think that's, if we end up getting this pool, which I think would be wonderful, I just don't want to see at the last minute anything be cut as far as, um, having a great nadatorium. I think that would be great. And, um, what I think we should really develop with this is a public-partner partnership. It's what we did in Clarksville, get that pool, which is, now, there's no longer a pool there. But when I was in Clarkville, we did a lot of things that created a really great private-public partnership. And I would like to see the same for Jeffersonville. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alan Peat and I live at 4208 Patricia Drive here at Jeffersonville, Indiana. Um, I'm here to talk about benefits of the new facility, the new pool. It's not only, it's not only a good benefit for Jeff High, it's also a unique opportunity for the Greater Clark County system. But the pool being a separate entity from the school, or not separate entity, but a separate structure from the school system that allows the opportunity for open swim. With the size of the facility, we have the ability for the swim program to be going on and the possibility of other sports to use it for conditioning of their athletes. Um, bigger pool also helps not just swimmers, but also other athletes, other programs. Um, it also brings in the opportunity to have swim lessons. Kids swim lessons, adults swim lessons, dive swim, or dive lessons, um, year-round instead of just during the summer months. Um, and had, you have the ability, right now, you have PACE that can't use the pool until the Jeff High swimmers are done. And that's putting some elementary school of kids going to bed later than they maybe should or homework maybe later than they should. And there's a possibility that the Jeff High swimmers should be swimming at the same time to some of the younger kids during PACE to get them home so they can have a dinner at appropriate time, um, and get to bed at appropriate time so they can do better at school. Um, so I think this is an opportunity for Jeff High, um, an opportunity for Greater Clark County schools to strengthen the community, bring in USA swimming events that would not touch Jeff High both because it's not big enough and we couldn't use it size-wise versus the swimming lanes. Summer, 850 meters, um, this would give us the opportunity to get USA swimming events in, in this area, which was just touched on, would bring in revenue for the, the area. Could potentially bring in revenue for Greater Clark County schools. Um, so I think this is a huge benefit for the, for the community. Um, and it should be very good.
Anyone else have anything that hasn't already been communicated? Please.
Sitting there so low, I thought it was a student in mass over there.
Hi, I'm Laura Goudin, I live at 34th and St. Mary's, Jeffersonville, Indiana. Um, I had a little something prepared, but pretty much everything has been said. And I agree with everything that's been said about Parkwood. Um, as everyone talked for Parkwood, I hope you noticed the pride in what they said, the pride that the children showed and spoke about. And because our staff, our community has so much pride, I would like our building to match our level of pride. So I'm advocating for Parkwood to have a new building.
Very well said. Um, does anyone else have a comment they'd like to make? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie. I live at 11523 Bell George, Sellersburg, Indiana. Amy Dixon texts, she talked on the backer, are individuals that trans, that transfer from other schools to come to Greater Clark schools. Two of my four children were these individuals that transferred from Rock Creek and we live in Sellersburg to come to Greater Clark. And the only reason why they came to Greater Clark was to swim. We left, we left in an environment that wasn't family. Amy Dixon did touch on the fact that the swimming community isn't family. There are many, many individuals, students, community, that hate the skills that they've learned, both in the pool and in the arena, and they transferred to other places in their lives. I have the honor of being a parent to Jeff High School graduate, who graduated last year, a super commodity in her class. She isn't for doing, she is doing fan packs. I really appreciate the education, the facilities that the Greater Clark schools offer students to give them a choice to come here. My children chose to go to Greater Clark. My children chose to swim for Jeff High School. My children chose to swim for PACE. All of these things have influenced their lives. And I want to thank you all for giving them this opportunity. A new school, a new pool for the Jeff High community, but only bring more people to your schools. And it's from people that are outside, under this roof. I'm looking around this room and there are three people beside myself whose children chose to go to Jeff High School for their swimming program. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Anybody in the audience, is there anything that wasn't mentioned that you'd like to say? At this point, if that's the case, then I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Walker touch on a thing or two. And we'll completely... Yeah, before we close out the hearing, just want to note that the next step in this process is that we have another hearing tomorrow night. Uh, that's part of the process of doing these bonds and these projects. You have to have two hearings. The first was tonight. The next one's tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. All of you are more than welcome to come back tomorrow night. Uh, and speakers, also come back and speak. Uh, I think it's important for the board, but also the community, to hear, um, you know, what this is about, you know, and why it's needed. Uh, it's a big ask. I mean, it's an awful big ask, uh, what we're trying to do here. Um, my personal opinion, you know, after looking at all the data, all the, the facility studies, uh, meeting with our bond, uh, people, our architects, is that we can do this and we can do it the right way for the communities of Jeffersonville and also Clarksville. And I think they're both very deserving. And the neatest thing about all of this, uh, coming from somebody that's pretty, I guess, a lot of people call me a tight one, is that, um, we can do this without raising the tax rate on anybody in this room and anybody in any of our Greater Clark communities. And a lot of people ask, well, how can you do that? How can you do this size of projects without raising taxes like other districts are doing around us? Well, two things are in our favor. Number one, we're paying off debt, you know, so that opens up some more room. But also, the assessed value in this district has gone up so much over the last three, four years because of all the growth, the building of homes, River Ridge, like we brought up earlier. So we can do these projects, not raise the tax rate on anyone, not negatively impact anyone in our school district. And, and my question to anybody would be, why wouldn't we? Are you per- You know, you've heard everyone speak here, you know, positively about these projects. Why would we not do this for our school and community? And many of these things, especially the pool, is not just for Jeff High, I mean, it's for the community of Jeffersonville, it's for the community of Greater Clark. Everybody's going to be able to use these facilities moving forward. So, I just wanted to raise that. Again, I think it's one of the most important things that we as a board, and I as a superintendent, and also all of you in this room that support these projects, have to reiterate to people, is that we're doing these projects, and we're not raising the tax rate. And that's very uncommon amongst school districts in the state of Indiana. Very, very uncommon. And there's three guys up here shaking their head that are all over the state of Indiana that would tell you, it is, it's really quite amazing that we can do this, so. Thank you, Mr. Mauffer. Due to the fact that no one else wishes to speak, I now declare this meeting ended. Thank you very much for your attention. Thank you for your time.